Mr. Randolph, did you finally get up the driveway? You shouldn't live on a hill.
I know, right?
So, Van?
Yes.
You want to go ahead or follow comments?
Yes, yes, for just an explanation.
All right.
Just that part of it.
Okay.
Sarah said the camera's not working. Can you tell if she turned it on yet?
It should be on now.
Okay.
Hold on one second. She say it's working now?
She hasn't said yes.
Does it work? Buddy, you ready?
Yes, sir, thank you.
I'm going to call the Loudoun County Commission Workshop to order for Monday, January 22, 2024. Before I turn the meeting over to Jim Jenkins, Commissioner Shaver has a couple comments.
All right, first of all, I'm going to guess by show of hands, a lot of you here to hear about the property in Hockus Valley. That would be a whole lot of you people. Okay, this is kind of new to all of us. Mr. Sparrow from Walton Global is here. Mr. Sparrow has signed up to speak in the public comment time, in our public comment time under the new state regulations. Anybody who wants to speak speaks. You have a five-minute limit to speak. I've got a feeling Mr. Sparrow cannot probably cover everything he needs to cover in that five minutes. So, at the end of the, down in the agenda, I have a section open there to continue the discussion of the Hockus Valley property. So, when his time's up, he's coming back. At that time, we'll have an opportunity as county commissioners to speak to Mr. Sparrow, to ask Mr. Sparrow questions. That's not the time that we can take all these. But I've already asked Mr. Sparrow, and he says, if anybody wants, he'll be glad to stay after the meeting and take questions from anybody that might have any about it. I know nothing about this, except what some of you all know I do. We know what it is and who's got it. So, we may all get enlightened a little bit more later on this evening. So, that's kind of where we're heading for this.
Hey, Jim Jenkins?
Thank you. This item is a resolution amending area. Loudoun County's only resolution, Article 4 supplemental, supplementary provisions applying to specific districts, Section 4.030, temporary use regulations pursuant to Tennessee Code Annotated, Section 13-7-105. This was presented by the Planning Commission. We have a lot of people coming out, or BZA, requesting a variance to occupy a camper or motor home during the construction of their home. What this would do, it would allow our office to be able to issue a permit to someone. They own the parcel, they have an active building permit, the full building permit to construct a home. That would give them a one-year timeframe to occupy this camper or motor home, one year maximum, while they're constructing their home. If they're not done with the house by the time, you know, within the one-year timeframe, then that's the end of it. But it just keeps on continuing to come to our board. The other thing that also requested is we have mobile homes in a lot of circumstances. People have a mobile home, they're trying to get a permit to move a new one in. Well, they need to live in this one, and the mobile home company's going to get rid of the other one during that. Once they can occupy this one, this would allow them to be able to obtain a permit for that home. Once the new home was set up, they would have 30 days to remove the old mobile home, and they will be responsible to contact our office once that is done.
Why does someone have the mobile home on the property that's going to build?
We, I didn't quite cover that. I mean, that's something we could add, you know, I'm just trying to address what the commission had and what we had. We still, we still have circumstances to where people have smaller dwellings, they want to build a new one. I don't think we're going to cover everything unless we just go into, if you're doing a replacement of a structure, we'll give you a period of time to do that.
And this is happening a lot. I was at the Planning Commission meeting, and every meeting now, there are people coming in, "I'm going to build a house, I'm building a house, I need to live there temporarily till I build my house." And right now, it has to go through the process of coming to the BZA, which can be 30 days or more, depending on when they would get an application in. So, what the Planning Commission want to do is just make it administrative, so Jim's office can handle it, instead of having, they approve every one of them. But instead of the BZA having to handle it, it just, it expedites everything for everybody.
Are there any situations you can think of where the BZA wouldn't approve one? And that you would have the authority to stop?
I don't know of any, you know, I've seen them approve these things to be done in this manner for houses that were even being built in the RE overlay. Our RE overlay excludes mobile homes, single-family mobile homes from being placed in it. But, but I have had circumstances where people were allowed to occupy that camper for a year while they were constructing a home and that. I don't know of anything where they have denied it, where it's truly, "I just need to be here at my location for this year while I build," and, and they usually give them a year timeframe to do that.
Jim, after the year, if they haven't completed their project, I've seen a lot of times they'll come back, circumstances come up, financial, other issues, contractors, and you have to do an extension. Will that go back in front of planning, or will your office just?
If they exceeded that one-year period, then they would need a variance from our regulation. This is our new regulation. They would need to then go to the BZA. Again, I don't want to get too far out there, but you know, somebody's one year and two weeks that they're going to be done. I don't know if I'm allowed to use a little judgment, but I would hope so.
I would hope so, too.
Any other questions? It'll be on the agenda for Monday, February 5.
Thank you all.
Mayor Harris?
Ms. Chairman, good evening, Commissioners. Appreciate the opportunity to do before you to present quarterly report from our Economic Development Agency. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for moving me up to the front, so I can get to the City Council meeting at 6:00. I was told the clock would be on me, which would be good, you know, I'll take a five-minute. I think our director handed out a sample of the, just the fourth quarter report, shows the Center 75 Business Park. We have the 111 acres that were sold in Project Panda, that's currently under development. The remaining acreage we have there, you can see, 17 acres, it's zone industrial, 24.8 acre zone commercial, 38 acre zone multifamily. Our next quarter focus is going to, we're going to start marketing the multifamily property, and then we're designating a new substation for Center 75. We're looking at the area right behind the entrance sign that says Center 75. It's kind of a dip, it's not, not really good property for much of anything for development. So, we're looking to put a substation right in there to supply Project Panda, the other, the other industries that's going out in that, in that area, that's industrial park. One thing, I'm sure you've heard, staff update. Blair Sitchler, she, she'll be still working part-time with the EDA. She accepted the position with the Chamber. She's the new tourism director, so she's doing that full-time, and she's going to work part-time with the, to continue with the QuickBooks and some of the accounting that needs to be done, so she'll be continuing with that. Then, you also see the workforce development there. Loudoun County Economic Development Agency, we provided three buses, paid for those buses to bus students to, from the inner city to Loudoun and Loudoun, and bring back to the venue. And there was 15 of our largest manufacturers that participated in that, in that job workforce development program. There's over 100 students showed up, which are currently enrolled in engineering and CTE skilled trade classes, which is well into construction and things like that. So, we had a good turnout from that. We did receive a $150,000 grant from TBA and Three Star, and we're going to use that to purchase some machinery and establish a new TCAP program to teach tool and die skills, CNC operator. We've got a lot of those businesses here, industries in our community, that could use that, that skill and that trade.
Where will that equipment go and be?
It'll be at the, at the center on Harrison Road.
Okay, vocational?
Yeah, vocational school. Our next quarter focus is going to be, you know, following up on Industry Interview Expo, summer interns, and full-time jobs with employers, submit some resumes and applications. And then, also, you also received the scope of work, the program of work. We try to focus on four areas, economic development, community development, workforce development, transportation. And you can see all those broken down, and what the scope of work is for '24 and '25. If there's anything you'd like to see different in that, you know, let us know, and I'll take that to the board, or let Commissioner Whitfield or Mayor Ratchell are both on board as well. We'd be happy to look at, look at that and add something to that for some other focus you'd like for us to look at. Also, our next meeting is Thursday, January 30th, at 11:30, at LCB office. Anyone like to attend that? We'd welcome you to come to attend. Is there any, this being the first quarterly report that, you know, I'll be presenting to you, if there's something else you'd like to see in, to you in the report, please let me know, we'll certainly try to do that.
What time did you say, Jim?
It's 11:30, January 30th, at LCB office. Any, any questions?
One follow-up, Jim. The Morgan Olson issue where they had their big layoff, in the pilot, there is, there is a clawback clause that if they don't meet certain benchmarks. Is anybody following up to see if they owe us property taxes back?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I think the number's around 400 jobs or something like that. There's an amount per job.
That's right.
We are following up on that, yes. Good question. Anybody else? Appreciate the opportunity. I look forward to coming back, presenting to you again. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you, Mayor.
Let me, let me, are you going to bring up corporate drive tonight? Do you need it?
I asked, I asked me a branch if I needed to stay for that, and he said he didn't think so.
First talk, I don't know if any speakers want?
I didn't know if he wanted to be a part in that.
Hopefully we can get a number of all parts tonight to bring back.
Yeah, I did for the tax assessment, you know.
Yeah, I wouldn't go for that one.
Hey, got to start somewhere, you know? But there is some, there is some future plans that we're going to have to probably expand that at some point, and I think Commissioner Whitfield, I think you find, stumbled up on it at the county or something.
Uh-oh.
Got to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. And we hope you make your meeting on time.
I'll try.
Okay. Next up, we have three members of the public that want to speak. First up is Rick Mathow.
There, I think there's a few chairs out there in the lobby.
There's some over there.
There's some over here, we need to pull them out. There's some sitting on the ground back there, paper, everybody have to stand up. Hey, some comfortable ones out there, I think. Hope you have some more up front here.
Thank you very much. Let me, let me speak to you. What I want to talk to you about this evening is our concern for the Hockus Valley property, in particular, with all due respect to Mr. Sparrow, I want to talk a little bit about company and what's here. Please, maybe, I have some questions that I want to, I want to raise. If you look at the, the information I'm going to give you, I have a packet I'm going to give you at the end of my speaking, speaking to you, and I'll go fast as I, as I can. The strategy of this, of Walton Global, right from their website, is to acquire land, hold it, and divest it. Okay, they want to monetize, their goal is to monetize land for profit for their investors. And that's the business that they're in. Now, I'm not going to concern myself with Mr. Sparrow or Walton's business, except that how it applies and affects Loudoun County. I have owned property in Loudoun County since 2002. I moved here in 2007. I'm from north, if you can't tell.
Yeah, we couldn't tell.
Well, yeah, I know, I know. But I lived in Merrimack, New Hampshire, wonderful town in 1974, just like Loudoun, very similar. Going there now, I moved out in 1983. I moved to Orlando, Florida, outside of Orlando. And when I moved there, I used to, I used to work up in Daytona. You go from Orlando to Daytona, it used to be all orange groves, and they had a freeze, two freezes in a row, and then a muck fire. Go there now, it looks like San Jose to San Francisco, it's all concrete, and I told my wife that it was going to happen. So, anyway, that's my concern. My concern is high-density development, and the burden that it puts on the resources of Loudoun County, I love Loudoun County, I'm not leaving, okay? And, and, and then result in what it makes Loudoun County, it destroys the character, and, and raises the taxes, and makes it tough for the, our children to be able to own a piece of property. So, this is what they do. They, they'll buy the land, they hold the land, and I got, it's in a packet that I've got for you, and then they divest it. They, they have a method of, of making that investment, but the key is that their investors must see a return. Their return comes from high density, okay? So, what I recommend is that, because they own the land, we can't stop them from moving to development, and I don't want to stop them from building on the land. But they don't build on the land. They sell the land to national and regional track builders, or certified builders, as they put it, okay? Like with our homes. So, they're going to come in. Now, I got, I got to move, okay? And this is a big deal, because if you look at the developments that they've built, the ones in Nashville, and they're in the packet I'll give you, it's on their website as well, okay? They've, they've got properties in there, that their properties are 20 feet wide for townhomes, 45, 65, 75, 95, et cetera. This is high-density property that's going to be coming into Loudoun County. So, you know the results of that. I was going to talk about it a lot more, but I, I got to hurry, okay? And that's okay, five minutes is enough. I want to leave you the packet, and then you're the commissioners, not me, so I respect what you do. I just want you to know what you're up against. And I don't want to disparage the company, I just want to understand what they're going to do. They're going to leave. The builders are going to build. And the key is zoning. The key to reduce the density is you zone. And I don't know, Mr. Shaver, Shaver, if that's one acre, one home per acre now, I don't know what that is. They'll still make a profit. They won't like it, I don't think, probably not, but that's what I, I request, this is a packet, I'm requesting an executive summary. Please, don't rezone that property to anything less than one acre. Thank you.
Thank you. I would say, don't leave, because I'm going to move Van's discussion, A, up right behind the public comments.
Okay, can I give you this?
Sure. Here, and then I'll pass them down.
Okay, thank you. I'll just go through here, so you don't have to get up.
You don't want her to get up.
Look at his tongue.
Thank you. Stuart Crane?
Good evening, my name's Stuart Crane, living in Mr. Shaver and Trish Morrison's district, on Hall Road, so over the hill, over the ridge, from the proposed development. We, we've lived here in Loudoun County since 93. Several of my neighbors have asked me to speak on their behalf. I practice law here in Loudoun County, and have some experience with, do quite a bit of property-related work. I've had an opportunity to, to look at some of the relevant legal documents here. The, the first I note is that this property is owned by Walton Tennessee LLC, which is quite an innocuous name, but their principal office is in Arizona. And my understanding is that they are in turn are associated with Walton International, which is basically a, an internet, an international, truly international business engaged in nothing more dignified than the speculation in real estate. They identify parcels that they perceive to be in the path of development, acquire them while they believe the price is good, and hopefully will turn around and sell them later at profit. I used to not feel too much for my, my unpleasant feelings about real estate developers have now gotten to the point that I call them real estate ruiners, because that seems to be what they do, particularly these days. We drive out Interstate 40, and we see these massive subdivisions going up with a bunch, hundreds of houses that all look alike, and this is not a pleasant prospect for Loudoun County, if that's in fact what envisioned by this ruination of nearly 400 acres of Loudoun County real estate. When we look a little bit farther, we look, try to page through their restrictions on this property in my, on my phone, and one of the prominent provisions of their restrictions on this real estate is that they count, no, no interest in this real estate can be owned by a U.S. person. And if you read the definition of U.S. person, it's any American, any, any U.S., anybody living in this country, or any entity controlled, they have, it is so restricted that, that nobody that, that lives in this country, or controls a business that lives in this country, or is a beneficiary of a trust, American trust, or anything of that nature, can control buying the interest in these properties. If you want to know that the way that this property is being sold, is it, is it what we call undivided interests? And that means, to make a real simple example for most of people here, if you and your siblings inherit a piece of property from your parents, you have an undivided interest in it. That means that everybody is considered to own, if there are four siblings, everybody's considered to own 25%, but that it's not a discreet parcel of 25%, it's a 25% of the whole. So, that's what they're doing here. This, that may be a little esoteric for most, but that's what's happening, and they're restricting the sale of those undivided interests to, to prohibiting U.S. persons from owning that. Now, that may be one of the possible, from, from reading the restrictions, one of the possible reasons for that may be to legally avoid U.S. securities laws, because there's a lot of mention of, of U.S. securities laws, and, and it's very easy to run afoul of the security, U.S. Securities Exchange Commission, when you do these kind of deals and start selling off pieces of real estate to, to investors. And that's what, that's a possible non-nefarious reason, is that they've got all these people that are buying in, and they're hoping at some point to sell, and all these people are going to make a profit. One has to be concerned by the fact, and I'm concerned, and our neighbors, I'm out of time, sorry.
If you hang around, I'm going to call Mr. Sparrow. Mr. Sparrow is the next speaker. He's coming up. And then what happens in five minutes, we'll stop it, and I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Shaver.
Thank you, Chairman, thank you, Commissioner, for the time, Mayor Ratchell. Time to decide exactly how to go about this. Probably the best thing over time is going to be answering questions as they come up. And so, I'll, I'll give some kind of overview, and then probably defer some of the stuff until we get specific questions, so I'll make sure that we're addressing. So, one thing that I'm going to say upfront, I'm not sure we're going to answer what everybody wants to get answered tonight, and that's things like, you know, what's, what's the intention for the property? The comments that have been made so far, I will say, we are a company that's in business to make a profit, no apologies for that. It's just a business that we're in. But I will tell you, we're not, it's not with an intent of going and ruining anybody's neighborhood, or anybody's county, or anybody's town. It's to provide land for builders, to provide housing for people who need it. And the other thing that I heard that was correct, and especially the first gentleman that spoke, is saying that it's all about the zoning, and it is. So, we're a 42-year-old company, Walton Global Holdings, part of Walton International, and we are owned by a family that were Irish immigrants into Canada, still owned by the same family. They started out with their first real estate deal of 14 acres, a husband and a wife team. The father died last year, the mother's 88, and her youngest son is our CEO, and he owns a company now with his, two of his siblings. So, there's a, two brothers and a sister who own our company now, so it's family-owned. And they were an international family, they traveled a fair amount, but they learned over time that, to do real estate deals, for anybody to do real estate deals, and for anybody to build houses, you got to have land to do it, and you got to have money to buy the land. And they learned, traveling internationally, that a lot of people internationally didn't have a lot of places to invest money, but they liked the land, and they liked safe places, so they learned to raise money internationally. They also set up what we call U.S. land funds. We buy some land through those. We do some institutional borrowing, where there are big funds that want to invest in land, and then some we do just on our own. So, we, we buy land in a lot of different ways, but we are a land investment company. We don't tend to help it, we tend to hold it for the builders. Back in 2008, 2011, when the real estate market crashed, a lot of these publicly traded builders, the Lenars that was mentioned, D.R. Horton, who's the largest builder in the country, Lenars number two, you got Paul D., you got David Weekly, there are 50 to 60 different builders. But a lot of the publicly traded builders, when the market crashed, ended up with a lot of raw land on their books. And that was not a great thing for them. And today, to build and build effectively, and to keep the price of houses down, they can't carry the land on their books. Well, a lot of people don't like to sell their land in pieces, they like to sell it all at once. So, these builders were looking for ways to have land bought, so that they can build by phase. Doing that helps them keep the price of housing down, and everybody should know today. I mean, I have concerns with my own $2,000, otherwise I'm going to be able to afford to buy a house, because the prices are so high. So, they look for people to buy land and hold and sell back to them, and basically that's what we do. So, when it comes to time, we typically find a builder, or we'll find a developer, and who wants the land, we'll take that land down, and in most cases, it's not purely speculative. We, we know there's a builder with an interest, or a developer with an interest before we ever buy it. We actually will go under contract with them, and they would be the ones that would come in to see you and to talk about the zoning. So, I can't tell you today what's going to go on the site. I can tell you, most of what we buy today is single-family detached housing, and that's most of the land that we buy. We have other pieces that have mixed use and other things on it, but that's primarily what we buy for. And then we let the builders come in and go through the zoning process, and talk with you about what's right for the piece of property, what fits for the area, what product goes on that, and how it needs to be buffered, and all the things that you have to go through when you develop land. So, we typically don't do that. Our, our piece in the process is to acquire the land, and to hold it and sell it back out in phases to the builders, so that they don't have to carry the land price on their books and drive up prices of housing. So, that's, that's pretty much what we do. I'm going to save for other questions, some of the, some of the detail of how we do business and what we do, and some of the items that the attorney has just brought up. I'll, I'll wait to answer those specifically by question, if that's okay? And is that what we want to do now? Are we going to?
It'll be fine.
Fine.
We'll finish up here, and I'm going to say a thing or two, then we'll, we'll turn it over to the County Commission.
Okay, that concludes the public comments. I'm now going to turn the meeting over to Van Shaver, whose district this lands in.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And just to kind of hit a few things on the front end, Loudoun County, over the last two or three years, we have, we have taken serious hold on our zoning policies. What you're seeing, local folks, what you're seeing along 321 in Little City, going up Interstate 40, the gentleman mentioned, that's not in Loudoun County. It's not going to happen in Loudoun County. We have probably the strictest zoning policies of anywhere in the state of Tennessee. We have probably the strictest zoning policies of anywhere in the state of Tennessee. Right now, you have to have, in an A1 zoning, you have to have a one-acre lot to build a house. In an R1 zoning, it has to be a minimum of a half-acre lot. So there are no seven units per acre happening in Loudoun County anymore. But the property in question down in Hoskins Valley is currently zoned A1, agricultural 1. That means maximum density, one-acre lots. Got to have it, no less, no way. That's not appealing to a developer. They want, I'm looking at some of the stuff the gentleman passed out here, they want a lot higher density than that. So Mr. Sparrow now, if he comes, as he comes back up, we're here to ask questions of County Commission, a lot of different questions. It'll deal with the Asian investment, it'll deal with the intent, he's already said that they don't know what the intent is, but I can tell you, speaking for myself, and this is my fellow commissioner, Joe Morrison from the 5th District, as long as I'm breathing, that zoning won't change. It's going to be A1 or no less. The other way, we'd take it the other way, so sit tight for that one. Mr. Sparrow, if you'd like to return back, and I'll say to the commissioners, I'll start off, my first question is, do you all, have you had, and have you been affiliated with D.R. Horton?
Yes. D.R. Horton actually is one of our largest clients, and that's how we address them.
That's what my research has shown. And I'll be honest, I don't want to disparage D.R. Horton or their product. I wouldn't want D.R. Horton Development in Loudoun County if there was any way to stop it. We know what they turn into, most of them turn into rental property. I mean, it's just back to that. You all, you all offered 1,042 undivided interest shares at $10,000 per share, and if my math is correct, you have sold all of those shares now.
I think that's correct.
And I see Walton Land Acquisition themselves bought 49 shares. So you now, you spent 4.6 million to buy the property, when I say you, I mean Walton, Tennessee, 4.6 odd million dollars. You have now taken in 10, $10,330,000 in shares that you sold. Now, these investors, wherever they're from, I'm sure the expectation is a return on their money. So you've got 400 acres already at raw material at 10.3 million dollars. How could you ever get the investment for anybody on that without mass development?
Well, it depends on the definition of mass development, but I don't think the intent of the builder that comes in here is going to be seven units per acre. So, I mean, your statement is pretty clear.
Three, four.
You want A1.
Five.
It may not even have to be on this one, even three, four, or five, I don't know yet. I've looked at some of the numbers of density there, and I knew that was an issue here, especially for density, but it doesn't necessarily have to be anywhere close to that to make it work. So these investors, by the way, we take investment from U.S. land, U.S. folks just as much as we do from anybody else, they all look for a return. But one of the things with these particular investors is they look for safe places to invest their money to get some return, but it's relatively patient, doesn't necessarily often have to be high returns if it's in a safe place. And a lot of these folks, they don't have the type of investment vehicles that we have. They don't have, they have governments that they're afraid to go take their money, and they don't have stock exchange like we have, and they don't have places to put it, and that's one reason that North American land has become a popular investment.
When you say these people, we're talking about Asian investors, foreign investors, right?
Yeah, and it's like in this particular, in this particular investment, because I want to address a couple of things. One was a comment, and I want to go pretty deep into the foreign investment.
That, we're all here to listen.
Yeah, so the comment on the restrictions saying you can't sell to an American resident, that is a correct statement with something added to the end of it. I think the way it's stated is you can't sell to an American resident investor without going through the proper process of sales. Well, what that means in these particular investment types is that they have to put it in front of the group because it is an undivided group and they have to get 60% of the people to approve it. And that's a little bit for a reason. We do set these investments up, the ones that are Asian investments, we do set those up, and they're foreign investments, not just Asian investments. We have offices all over in Germany. Our largest group of investors are actually Canadian. But because they're set up under a certain set of rules, we don't want somebody to just, or everybody to go out and just take their interest and start selling them off to somebody else and we don't know who they're selling it to because it's set up under a certain, a certain type of investment for foreign investments. So we don't want to go out and sell like that. The other thing is that, because it is an undivided interest, and that was a good explanation of it, if there are 1,000 investors and they own 1/1,000 of the land, they don't own a piece of the land, they own 1/1,000 of all of the land. So when we come up with a contract to sell it, we have to put together a package and it has to go in front of that group, and over 60% of those people have to vote to sell it for it to be sold. And so we do set it up so it's not sold, but the reason it says not to an American resident is because it's a foreign investment, and it's set up as a foreign investment, we don't want it sold. If somebody, if U.S. has someone who's invested, we have U.S. land funds and other things they can invest in, they don't have to invest in this one. But for these particular ones, we keep them in the buckets that we have.
Are any of these foreign investors from countries or entities that have been identified by the Homeland Security Department of the United States as hostile?
No, they're not. And we run, Commissioner Saffield, we run, there's called OFACS, which is that list that identifies all those countries and identifies individuals. We have a program that every investor that we have is run through the OFACS, and we run the OFACS every day. We rerun it every day.
We could get a list of the people where they're from that have bought this property or want to buy it.
There are 16, I think 16 different countries.
Do you have Chinese investors?
We do have some, and those Chinese investors are lumped into one group and just understand that some of those Chinese investors are from Taiwan, a lot of them are from Taiwan and Hong Kong, and the only people that dislike the Chinese government more than probably some of us are people in Taiwan and Hong Kong. So yeah, there are Chinese investors in this room.
Okay, do you know they're not supposed to have any interest in real property?
No, we have.
I mean, there is legislation that states that?
Well, we also checked all the legislation. As a matter of fact, I've probably been in front of you guys to talk earlier, except I spent the last month or so visiting with the State Attorney General and with the Lieutenant Governor, and several of y'all, state representatives to talk through that. And there's additional legislation actually that's being proposed right now that would further restrict it, but the legislation that we have reviewed with them, and we've been in front of the State Attorney General and Representative Reagan and others, nobody has told us that Chinese investors can't invest in them.
Yeah, it's SB 122 slash HB 40, foreign ownership of real property.
We'll revisit that.
It went into effect July the 1st, 23.
Yeah, and I think, I think one of the things is after July 1st, and I think all the property we closed is closed before that. But I will tell you this, when we go into states, we look at that legislation, because the one thing we're not going to do is we're not going to violate legislation, and if it's prohibited, then we won't buy any more land there. That's what we, that's what we're doing. We're not buying any more in Florida right now, and if the legislation stands, we won't buy any more in Tennessee because we're not going to violate the rules of legislative laws. It's not our intent.
But it also states that if you do have those prohibited parties, that they would have to divest all rights titles and interest in the property.
Only two years, I think, is how that rings.
So you do know about the rules of possession?
Yeah, and I will tell you, understand this, because we buy the way we buy, our intent, you know, it's clear, the state is paying for us to go, they're not wrong, our intent is to sell the property. I have a developer with us tonight, Mr. Nick Kaiser from Johnson City, who has an interest in this property. He's here tonight because he wanted to see the environment before he has further interest in the property. He's going to see it tonight. So, yeah, so he'll see that tonight. But we typically identify interest because our intent is to sell the property as quickly as we have somebody who wants to buy and develop it. So our intent's to sell it. And so in situations like this where we know legislation is changing, I think the current legislation that is being proposed even is attempting to be retroactive and move backwards, and we are aware of that as well. But again, we don't shy away from that, we don't want to break any laws, we will never break any laws, and if somebody decides that we can't do that where we're doing it, we just won't do it anymore. And so it's easy. And so, you know, if there are concerns about this, I would say, help us get a zoning that works for a developer or builder, and we'll sell it pretty quickly and be out, and that'll be the end of it. So, you know, it's definitely clear about that.
I haven't spoken to anyone in Loudoun County that's in favor of this. I dare to say there's not a single person in this room that is. As far as I'm concerned, it's zone day one, it's going to be zone day one until I don't sit in this seat.
If that's not unfair, we don't mind hearing it. That's all we're here for.
I think it's great that we're straightforward with it. There's been so many questions, and of course, you have two different, we have two different issues going on. We have the ideal of any kind of development, other than a farm development, other than large lot development, happening in Hoskins Valley. My great, great, great grandfather on the side was Hoskins, from Hoskins Valley. I've got a long time history in Hoskins Valley. We don't want any big developments in Hoskins Valley, not particularly you but anybody else. But then we also have the other branch of this one, which is the Asian connection to us. That's concerning for a lot of people in itself, and you probably already know my name. I have done a number of stories, a series of stories on this, and I have titled these stories, the first one was Asian invasion, it's been numerically from that point. And that stemmed from the Asian carp invasion we've been dealing with, so it just play on words. But there are a lot of concerns across this country. Just today, I did a story about Biden administration's lost track of all the land being purchased by Chinese, and I understand they didn't purchase your land, they just invested in your land. But I know I, I know these people, we all have concerns. I think it would be the same if it had been from Saudi Arabia, if it had been from Japan, if it had been from Mexico. I think we would have all had these same concerns. So development is our concern, and who the investors in this land is are both concerns. You've addressed it a little bit, but why should we not be concerned, knowing the world, global situation now, that we have this large Asian investment in Hoskins Valley?
What the concern is, is the concern, these are foreign people that are doing something they shouldn't do.
We don't know. We don't know. We've never had 145 foreigners to buy property in any of our communities. Nobody knows anything about it.
And we track, and we know, we know there's a lot of, I mean, Arkansas in particular has passed legislation because there are a lot of Chinese companies, not just Chinese, but other foreign countries and companies and government agencies that are going in and buying large tracts of farmland, and they're in some cases buying them whilst the military installations. Everybody knows the concerns about that. What I want to tell you about this is if you just don't like the fact that foreign people are investing, that's one thing, but if it's a concern over issues of security or anything else, these 1,000 people that value a $10,000 interest in this will never set foot on this land, will probably never see this land, and will make decisions about when it's sold based on a package we put in front of them, based on a suggestion that we make to them as to whether or not they should approve it to move forward with the investment. And that's primarily the extent of the involvement that they'll have in the property. No one person can do anything with that land or make any decision about that land or what happens on that land without the group approving it, which would take a 60% vote of the entire thing. And these 1,000 investors, I guarantee you, not a single one of them knows the other one. So from a standpoint of security or any issues, Lieutenant Governor in Shell asked me, he said, "Do you have any problem developing land with a communication line near it?" And I said, "Well, every piece of property I know that's ever been developed's got a communication line on it because you got to have internet and phone." And I said, "If you're asking from a standpoint of these foreign investors," I said, "they'll never see the property. This property will be sold to an American builder who more than likely is going to sell every home in their community if it's ever developed to American citizens." And so, from that standpoint, we don't have any concerns with the security, and don't think you should have any concerns with that because they'll never be on.
With all that being said, and not much worried about direct threats from people that, from people that are buying the property, I just, as an American, I have a problem letting foreign investors who have been identified as a threat and hostile to this country to make money, to make a dollar. When they ever set foot on the property is, again, I dare say, any of those people that operate in your international group probably very seldom if ever go set foot on property that they helped purchase, but that's just, you know, to me, it's kind of like aiding and abetting. You know?
I understand that.
I know that China is not a friend of America, Russia is not a friend of America, almost every Middle Eastern country is not a friend of America. In fact, there's not many, America doesn't have many friends out there, and I said whether, you know, whether they ever come and set foot on the property, if they use any of the money that they've made off our property here to harm the U.S. in any way, I mean, just saying, and I don't want to sound so reactive, but I do have a problem with that. I just don't think that we need to be selling our birthright and our country and our rights. I know you have a job, and that's, you're out there to try to find property that these people can sell and turn over and sell again.
Well, Commissioner, I appreciate you saying that, and again, you know, there aren't a lot of people in this room, present company included, that would disagree with you, which is why we try to be very careful about who we let invest and what company we let invest.
You're going to follow the money.
Not if it's, not if it's a country that's on a list that is not considered, we're not going to follow the money there.
China is.
But going forward, going forward, 90% of everything in this room probably came from China, and it's an unfortunate situation that we've got because so much of our stuff's being built there and made there, shipped to us there, and everybody'd like to see some control of that as well. But, you know, our job right now, going forward, if the rules say that we shouldn't, you can't do it because there are Chinese investors in it, then we won't.
You're saying, you're saying because Tennessee says that. So California says it's okay, you're still going to invest in California to Chinese that is hurting our country.
Yeah, and keep in mind that there, not all Chinese are mainly Chinese, a lot of them are Taiwanese and Hong Kongese, people that we really like to dance with.
Do you consider Hong Kong part of China?
Hong Kong, Taiwan.
Do you consider Hong Kong part of China?
I think so.
Okay. When you were just talking about where your investors came from, seems to be a lot of them come from Hong Kong, which is China.
Of course, and you've already identified, the other, the other elephant in the room is that people that live in this county, they live here, and some of them have moved here because they like to be able to walk out the front door and see the mountains and enjoy the rivers, enjoy the lakes, the recreation, everything. If, you know, if they want the other, then they can just go up the interstate a few miles to Pella Cippe, and you can live in roof, the rooftops are almost touching each other, if that's what you want. I mean, it's whatever, but I don't think the people in Loudoun County want to give up what we have right now. We know we're going to grow, we know we're going to continue to build houses and whatever, but I'm not for, like I said, as counties buy us, you know, five, six, seven, eight, you know, as many as you can cram onto one lot of land, and it's, these people want it. Like I said, Loudoun County is, we're already feeling the burden of growth, sometimes maybe not well-thought-out growth and whatever, but it puts the burden on, whether it's in a city limit, it puts the burden on every taxpayer in the county.
Yes, sir.
And educate those people, we have to build roads for them, we have to put, I mean, it's an expensive process. I'm not anti-growth, I'm just, we like to have the reins in our hands about how we grow. Right now, I don't know that I could support, I can support what we've got. If you've got water and sewer, you can have two houses on an acre of land. If you don't, you can have one house. That's about it. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to monopolize your time.
I'm going to ask one more question, and again, this is, this is our time to ask. Like I said, Mr. Sparrow has agreed before we started, maybe he's changed his mind now. Some of these people... Some of these people may have other questions. I'm sorry, you're the point guy. You seem like a nice guy, but you're Walton Global to us tonight, so.
I get it.
And we're not fans. Then December, Loudoun County, for your benefit possibly, we passed a resolution that says we will not issue building permits to any property owned by or invested by foreign investors, hotspots.
I'm just, I'm just, that's, are they false?
We passed, we passed a resolution that says we will not issue a building permit to any property owned or invested in by foreign folks from countries hostile to the United States. Now, that's directly targeted at this particular kind of process right here, project. So, Mr. Investor, Mr. You, you may say, "Ah, that's crazy, they can't do that." Well, we did it, and we're ready to defend it. We'll defend it in court till the end if we have to. So, right now, as long as it's owned by you and your investors, there won't be any building permits. If it's sold to an American company, that wouldn't apply, of course. So, we did that in December as, as a reaction to, to being prepared for this kind of investment going forward.
And, and our intent's to sell it to an American builder.
I would say your only option is to sell it to them.
Well, that, that was our ten anyway, that's what, that's what we could do.
Mr. Chairman, I personally don't have any more questions. I'll certainly, uh, rest of the commission.
Anybody else? Have you had any talks with any specific developers?
Not sure.
Right here, and several builders. And, and I'll tell you, one of those builders is D.R. Horton, but that's, they're here, and that's who we talked to. And we've talked to multiple builders who have an interest in being in Loudoun County, Knoxville, N.S.A., Chattanooga. There's a lot of growth in eastern Tennessee right now. There, there are more builders coming, guys, I'm just telling you. Because they're already looking at Chattanooga to come up here. And they're good, some of them are good builders. And I think, I, Mr. Sanfield, don't disagree with you all, and I encourage you to control what you want to control with your zoning rules. And that's what you should do. There's nothing wrong with controlling growth, it's healthy. And I would encourage y'all to do exactly that. That's how you make your, we don't go anywhere to sell land or somebody develop and do a bad development, ruin anybody's land.
Well, D.R. Horton already has a lot of his work on display in this county. So, you know, without saying anything else, Horton and what's, one built out of high school, Goodall?
Goodall.
Goodall and Horton have, have, they, they've built stuff here, and so.
You're flying across the globe, you're just in an airplane, you're on the, I don't care how you did it. How on earth did you all pick out Loudoun County and Hotchkiss Valley to want to do something like this? Something brought you here.
We, we have an acquisition dean that, the acquisition gentleman who purchased this property, not with a company right now, but he, he was looking at east Tennessee in general. And I think a local broker brought us this piece of property. And so, it wasn't, hey, let's go to Loudoun County. It's a local broker said, "I have got this piece of property, it has to be in Loudoun County off the interstate. Would you like to look at it?"
But if all about this property is no longer with the commission?
No. He's still doing, he's still doing land acquisition with another company, but he's not with us anymore. So, it wasn't, people weren't sitting somewhere, and let's, let's go pick up a piece of land in Loudoun County, you can go there and do it there, it wasn't that.
Are you still, in any way, shape, form, or fashion, I kinda hate that the mayor left, trying to work a deal with the city of Loudoun to get that property annexed?
We, we, what we do, Mr. Shaver, and, and I know that came up in some of the discussions that were had, when we initially come in to look at a piece of property, we try to meet with everybody. We meet with the counties, we meet with the surrounding towns. And, and it's for, it's for particular reasons. It's, if you can zone a piece of property where it is, there's no reason to talk to anybody else. If you can't, sometimes you do go talk to somebody about annexing, if they're more amenable to having it zoned. I haven't talked to them in a while, their, their city manager left, and I haven't met with the mayor in a while.
Hey, boss, yeah, he's gone.
I didn't even, they were.
I'm just gonna say, I, I hope you're upfront and honest with your developer. This commission is gonna support these residents, and we're just gonna support Commissioner Shaver, Commissioner Morris. This land will never come out of A1.
You picked the wrong district. They picked the wrong district.
We had a series of meetings with the residents of Loudoun County, all through last year and before that. And they told us loud and clear. They didn't want to turn this into Hardin Valley, Farragut, or one of the high-density areas that surrounds us. So, we as elected officials take to heart what our constituents says. And I think Mr. Commissioner Whitaker.
Anything else?
Do you still wanna hang around? That's up to you.
If there are more questions, I'm happy to.
Oh, I bet there's a lot, but, but now, I'm gonna say this, I'm gonna say this, Mr. Shaver, he's been a stand-up guy. He is not Walton Global, he don't own the place. He's the man that ain't sitting down here to try to smooth this thing over because the other guy bought property they can't do nothing with. So, he's done a yeoman's job of this. If he stays to take your questions, please be friendly and respectful. He's gonna try to represent their position. We know what it is, we know what our position is, and we're not gonna change our position if I'm reading the room just exactly right. So, if y'all wanna hang around, the rest of our agenda is not really very long. I would say we'll be done in 30 minutes or less. So, if you're willing to hang, they're willing to hang, you're on your own after that, how about that?
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for coming.
Mayor Bradshaw, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I need to add one too. I'll add, first, I'll touch on what is on the agenda. We have 20-plus acres of Loudoun County on off Corporate Park Drive. Our public mayor Harris and LUB is interested in acquiring that piece of property. I've talked to a couple commissioners, I think their commission's open to selling it. I wanna make sure the commission's open to selling it. But I'm certainly no real estate agent or assessor, and we need to start getting some numbers together as far as what county would sell it for.
We have one behind the table here.
And also some interest on what it would be used for as well.
Absolutely.
What's its zone, does anybody know?
M1 industrial.
Right, it's, I mean, it's right in front of Morgan Olson.
And it's got a substation on it, right, Rosemary?
Absolutely. Rosemary, we get some quotes on that for us?
She's got them.
Oh, oh, she's, she's a voice, she's prepared.
We'll talk about it. Do you know what they want to offer? I mean.
Did you hear them sell? We've looked at the appraisal, the county appraisal.
Yeah, I know what the count is on the website, but now me and you can talk and let them pick and see what sticks.
Because I know what we paid for it.
But it's commission, y'all are, is commission open to sell? And I think Rosemary and I can sit down and make a statement.
Talk what they want to say.
Y'all good with that?
It's sitting there empty?
As long as we get to keep the turkey, huh, right, it's on another chair. I'll get Rosemary on that, thank you. Next, I handed that right before the meeting. Coffee Culture is a little coffee shop here next to our storage and our core building. And they've used, they've got a drive-through window through our back alleyway. Open alleyway, no gate, no fence, no, it's open, sort of the old drive-through, used to be from the back. They're using a drive-through there for folks to come through. I think they're actually doing pretty good.
Yeah, they are.
Yeah, I think it's, people are liking it, picking up some momentum. This is an indemnification agreement with them, that if somebody hits their building, bounces off the entire building, we're not held liable for anything that happens to their drive-through customers. Like I said, it's already an open alleyway anyway, so. Bob has written us up, Matt Koshman said he's good with the insurance remittance on it. But I will need to, I will ask the commission to sign a resolution, Loudoun County entering investor agreements.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Well, that'd be, if we enter, it'll be strictly with Coffee Culture, correct?
Yes, it is with the owner-operator of Coffee Culture. If it changes, becomes a Starbucks, it would not be in effect in, I don't do it with Coffee Culture. And also, I passed out our annual report for the local record level agency. If y'all are having trouble sleeping, check that out, that'll put you right to sleep. But it's pretty good info about the things we're doing with TRDA as well. And, Mr. Chairman, I think that's all I had, thank you.
Okay, on that Coffee Culture, put that on the fifth.
I will have, soon, Bob is working on a resolution, and so as soon as it's drawn up, I'll send it out. And make y'all have a look at it, see if anything.
One of the, like, how, how long is this agreement for?
How long to stay?
Perpetuity, or is it's like annually, or, I mean, I think there needs to be some terms to it.
I would think it would be the duration of the business.
That would be my.
If they're there a year.
What if we go to sell the business in two years, and we're stuck with this lease, and they can use it for?
No, it's only, it's only good for the.
It's only good for that.
It's no longer a Coffee Culture.
What if we sell the bank in two years?
We're not selling.
I understand hypothetically, I mean, like, what if we want them gone for whatever reason? Why don't they start hosting concerts in the park?
That's a first district thing, yeah.
There needs to be some kind of out for the county, I think, because apparently we're not good at that.
Put in a 30-day, with their all 30-days, don't forget.
I think he's smart.
I think Bob said that today. On something we talked about, there was a 30-day clause put in, some could not be resisted or not.
We can get, we certainly end that in, I don't see a problem with it.
I'm sorry, I had to step out. What, did you come to terms with how much we was gonna sell the property for?
No.
It's a lot, a whole lot.
Oh, it is, yeah.
Okay.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, thank you, thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Shaver discussed codes enforcement.
I'm gonna turn this one flat over to Jim, I don't know where he went. There, he's right here. This is stuff he's bringing by way of the planning commission, uh, you'll, you'll hear it.
There's, there's been discussion in planning commission on some of the properties through the codes enforcement side of things, junk litter, debris violations, things of that nature. Arizona Resolution does have a section in it that deals with these properties. Some of the planning commissioners are saying, "We have it, what do we need to do to enforce it?" So, we have properties, some that work with us to clean up, some that disregard, 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 that's went on for it. So, it's come to the point now that we're in a position, if the commission wants to, you know, there is a clause, basically, we send out letters of notification, return notification letters. They have a timeframe, it's 20 days to bring that property into compliance. If they don't, then by law, the county can, at that time, we can contract. It states you can have the highway department, I don't think that's feasible. Or we can contract a third party to handle that property and have it cleaned up.
Right here.
That property owner would be responsible for all costs incurred. They would have 60 days to repay the county those costs. If it wasn't repaid, the county would have to file a lien against that property. Then if you read that law, it states after one year, that the county would sell that property to recoup its costs.
It's a big deal, I mean, we need to really think this one through. We know we have problems, Rosemary, I do, every district has problems with this sort of thing. And the folks, unless there is some really hard way to enforce this, I mean, Jim can send them letters all day long, and they can say, "Okay, well, Bob can sign them into court all day long." Okay, well, if there's gonna be a bite, there's gotta be a bite. But in the flip side of that, it's gotta apply to everybody exactly the same. It's gonna apply to the, to the tent huts out here on the side of the road, just like it applies to the guy with a million-dollar house. It's gotta be equal to everybody. That's my thing with all zoning policy. I don't like zoning, period, to start with. But if we're gonna have it, and we've got it, and the citizens voted it in in 1971, it has to apply equally to everybody. So, I think this is a think-on kind of deal.
Yeah, and, and in discussing this, you know, I've asked the county attorney for some response, and trying to figure out, you know, basically, the way that's written, it puts the, the decision-making on me that you're in violation, for lack of better words. You know, I mentioned, you know, if we send this out, maybe before we do the cleanup, we take it to the board of zoning appeals. He said, "It's not the board of zoning appeals." He said, "Ultimately, it falls back on us to make that decision. They are in violation, enter the property contract, it's cleaned up." Just bringing it up speed back. That is under the junk litter, debris section of zoning. It's a specific zoning, I did write that.
Some places it qualifies.
Write it down. The remaining things, like when we get into zoning violations, building without permits, burning, things of that nature, that falls under a different line item of zoning, which the county attorney would need to enforce. Basically, we get a warrant, have it served by a deputy, have him taken to court. And speaking with Mr. Bowman, he mentioned that we need to rework our penalty section in Article 7 of the zoning resolution to remove the section where it says, "If found guilty of misdemeanor." He says that language can be removed. He also mentioned that he would work on revision of the penalty clause, and I think it can go to $500, if I understood him correctly. That's $500 a day per violation that they can be responsible for for not bringing it into compliance. But those would be enforced through the county attorney.
Sounds good.
But I guess I'm looking for a little, you know, we have a law in place, and I understand that. And we've tried to work with people, we really do, because we, I have a hard time when it comes to some of the things in the job and what you're dealing with with the citizens, I think we all do. But just look for some guidance and on how y'all want this handled, you'll start, unfortunately, making it hap, making it happen.
Well, I guess the, the biggest thing I have for me, we've got to put some teeth in it. But I think we're gonna run across some folks, maybe some elderly folks that are just, man, are, are just trying to make it, that's in bad shape. And here, we're gonna put a burden on them, and I, I kinda struggle with that. So, I, I'm like, man, I think it's something we've really gotta think about. We've gotta put some teeth, because there's some, there's some bad situations out there. But we also have to figure out a way to take it case by case.
I think there's got to be some judgment used, there's gotta be some common sense involved.
We can't just, it can't just be willy-nilly. I, I think we have to have some.
Our office has never had an issue with trying to work with you. And there are people that will work with you, you know, and, and get some of them cleaned up. But then there's some that it's just, letters aren't returned, or letters are not returned, and there is just no desire. I've worked on one in Commissioner Jenkins' district, and I've answered emails and done everything I can to get this gentleman to, at least let me show you the issues, but it's not doing anything, it's not doing any of it.
That on child fare? That on, no, that on child fare? And, and to be fair, for you folks that are here and don't generally hear all this sort of stuff, you're under these same regulations, and I don't like them, I don't like zoning and planning, but they're there. So, we're gonna enforce them. And when, when, you know, I, I have my property, I pay my property taxes, I don't need the government to help me do nothing, tell me to do nothing. But when does what I do start impacting my neighbor and his quality of life? And the, the filth on my lot's falling over on his lot? And, and so, I mean, all of y'all, we've all dealt with this sort of stuff. So, we're just trying to find the even balance to try to be able to enforce and to keep these things cleaned up without just being a tyrannical type government saying, "By golly, you're gonna do it, we're gonna take your land away from you." God, that's, I don't even like the sound of that, but I don't know what else you do with people that just absolutely refuse to comply. So, Jim, you put us together something, put us together something of what you'd like document-wise that we can look in our hands, because right now, we're just talking about, your, your planning commission said, "Let's look at this," you said it to us, we need something black and white.
I will get y'all copies of that section of zoning, try to break it down as to what it is, maybe some examples of what we're facing.
Maybe we just go to the next step and all of that, and not all the way to the end or something.
But there's some examples, like in my district, where I had an individual who was in violation for, you know, how many years down there at Vanderbilt Chapel?
A few.
A few years, and then finally it timed out, the judge said, "Sorry, it's been going off too long, statute of limitations has kicked in," so, you know.
That was collecting a fine.
That was for collecting the fine, so I.
That, that, that particular item at this point, as I understand, that would be something to where our office basically forwarded that to Bob Bowman, and then he would take it from there and take it through the courts. That would be something, you know, like, we couldn't go down, I've got a building without a permit, we're not gonna go tear the building down. We'll be taking that as, you know, going to certain violations of that nature in the court.
Right, but it needs to be done a little quicker versus, you know, continues, 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 ah, let's kill the time, yeah, 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 oops, too late. Just like that, just like that dirt bridge out there on Vanderbilt Chapel Road.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I gotta make me an update real quick.
Big, big note.
If I may, to the commission, I'd like to give an update on a project. It's a few months ago, I can't keep up with the dates. It's in regards to the growth of the city of Hills. The commission took action to stop the issuance of building permits in that development. Until it was addressed, I know Mr. Cook with Heritage Plan Development, Cook Brothers Construction is here. Because I told him I would try to discuss this with the commission tonight. I feel a bunch in the planning office, Mr. Cook. I feel a bunch in the planning office. Uh, Mr. Cook, Derek Jones was Sterling Engineering and Mr. Cook's attorney had met on the side. Derek Jones looked at the property, requested some documents of the development. So what I sent him was, uh, the 2007 original plat- plan that La Mane Associates had put together for the development. Uh, Mr. Jones took those documents based with the site inspection. He, uh, then also took the additional documents where they're still being placed on the rear of the lot. So he has everything interlaid and overlaid, okay? So he's trying to figure out what it was before the area totals and runoff. He is not the engineer of the roof, so this is the best work he can do. He took that information, uh, essentially overlaid everything, looked at the area that was originally contributing. He said it's around 4.7 acres contributing from original to drainage. Uh, that area was reduced to about 2.75 acres of drainage going to that area. So what he's saying is some area was taken off by roads being diverted and other grading. Uh, he used the, uh, their systems of calculation based on soils and coverage and things of that nature, uh, the structures and trying to calculate. And in essence, in a nutshell, what he did is based on a site visit he did after the rain, looking at what was occurring. Uh, the documents he had provided, the engineering and calculation, he gave me a letter back stating that there was, uh, no significant, if any, additional runoff occurring. He did also state there are some swells that are, that are matted. The rear of the property is matted. Uh, vegetation hasn't quite grown up through it yet. It's starting. But he did state also that as that continued to grow and increase, it would help with velocity runoff throughout that process. This is what, uh, the best guidance I could give, uh, Mr. Cook in trying to address the situation was to get an engineer on site to evaluate. Uh, that is what Mr. Cook has done. And this is the response and letter that Sterling Engineer would give back to him. I wanna bring that up to speed. That's honestly all I know to do with it at this point.
I'll defer to Mr. Waller on this one since it's his sixth district.
Yes, sir. Supposed to rain a lot on Wednesday and Thursday and Friday. I'll get with the landowner then and see how he feels about it. And I'll get an engineer on site after the rain. See how it's looking. The old boat in February. Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Or not.
Or not.
Or not.
February 5th.
Thank you. Glad you all.
Thank you, Jim. Aaron. Maybe we might allow.
Okay, all of these things, these items are recommendations of the budget committee. There is a consideration of a request for $2,000 for an EMA radio program training to be spent from the fire safety, uh, the, the fire safety restriction. There is, uh, there's, will be a resolution to expense ARCA funds from Commissioner Satterfield towards the required match of the TDA ARCA for the Grand Act Sewer Project in the amount of $495,000. There is also a recommendation to spend $25,000 from ARCA that is left over and has not been assigned to any project towards a preliminary engineering report for that same project. And for the members that are not on the budget committee, I distributed this, this spreadsheet. It is, it was a discussion of ARCA projects that are not complete. The only thing that we wanna make sure to bring your attention to is these funds have to be spent or obligated by December 31st of 2024. Okay, so just kinda keep that in mind. And if you have any questions, you will.
Let's, let's go ahead. Rosemary, William, this kinda impacts you all. It does, does me too. And she's gonna try to get some more clarification, better clarification. But originally it said had to be obligated or spent, had to be obligated or spent by 2024 and spent by 2025.
No, it's gotta be committed by the end of December, 24.
Of this year. Gotta have contracts on some.
It has to be spent.
You're all's million dollars. That means that building needs to be under construction before the end of this year. Just bear that in mind.
It needs to be finished.
Finished?
Yes.
Well, it's not gonna be finished by the end of the year.
It needs to be finished because we are not in a contract for that building and we're given, uh, funds almost like a nonprofit organization, sort of, kind of, to the city. But because we're not in a contractual agreement with the city for that project, those, that building will need to be finished and we will need to extend those funds by 2024, by the end of 2024. Okay? So if anybody else has any questions.
Better start, better get out to tomorrow, Rosemary, shovel. I know who's doing the groundbreaking.
Just time to start getting these projects, you know, wrapped up.
Well, true. Can't go on forever.
Yes, exactly.
And what, what does that do with our Loudoun County Fire Rescue Building?
That's another big.
I mean, hey, we gotta get something moving pretty quick.
Yeah.
But that's on a drawdown basis, you know?
Exactly.
Yes, cause we don't wanna have to send these funds back to the federal government. We wanna keep them and we wanna spend them. Okay? So, the next thing was a consideration for additional funds and on the election edition at the county office building in the amount of $8,500. That money is gonna come from capital projects funds. There's some money that was set aside for another project that is no longer being finished. The next things are gonna be line adjustments in county general fund. None of these line adjustments will affect the fund balance. The same is true, then there, okay, then the next fund that there will be amendments in is how they fund 131. That's offset. There was actually multiple line adjustments that none of these will affect the fund balance either in Fund 131. But you will see them on the spreadsheets when they're presented for the, the meeting. There was also adjustments in Fund 131, which is general purpose school. The overall impact on the fund balance is $55,000 by decrease. There were also amendments in Fund 142, which is school federal projects. And those amendments will have no effect on the fund balance. And then there was amendments in Fund 156, which is education debt service. This is to appropriate for the $3 million that was recently, we did the capital outlay note for the. Okay? You'll see all of those on your spreadsheet. And I believe that's it. Thank you, Mr. Shaver.
Okay, thank you, man.
Hey, Aaron, how about that, uh, food securities grant? Is that, where are we with that?
I haven't heard anything about it, but I can reach out to.
Okay, cause I know we're waiting to sign a contract to award that money. I know it's been awarded.
We sent in our portion.
Okay.
We're just waiting to get it back.
Okay.
A fully executed cost.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else from the commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I would strongly encourage every commissioner, anybody else that wants to. If you get a chance, get down to the county building. The election commission building, the new building is almost completed. Susan has moved into hers. And she's fired up. John Goddard's in where they're doing soil conservation. It was a little more involved. So it's taking a tad long, but they're getting really close to it. But the new election building is, compared to where she was operating that little closet, it's really, really nice. So if you swing by there, go, go look at the election commission office. At, at a cool $754,000, it oughta be nice, right?
She's still going off right there out of her office.
She'll still be, her office will be there, but everything election-related will be back there in that building. Come and go, big roll-up door on the back so they don't have to bring everything through the building. It's gonna be a real addition.
From her office to that building now, correct?
Do what? A door? Yes, there's doors between, uh, covered on in concrete slabs. Oh, yeah. She can just stroll right through. You done?
Anything else? We'll call for an adjournment.
We're gonna hang around. Some of us who don't want to, don't have to.